Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Now, since we in church, why don't we do this? Why don't we give our God a great hand clap of praise? We are here today as a faith-based community to stand and declare publicly and openly that we stand with Mayor Brandon Johnson. As we continue to collaborate on his vision, his plans to make our city better, our communities better, but our children understand that they can have a greater future. So at this time, we're going to hear from Bishop Simon Gordon. Bishop Gordon is going to come with our opening prayer. Following Bishop Gordon's opening prayer, our host Bishop Larry Darnell Trotter of the Sweet Holy Spirit Church is going to come give his opening statements, and then he will in turn introduce our great leader Mayor Johnson.
Let us pray. Gracious God, our Father, we thank you for this opportunity to hear from our mayor and to deal with an issue in our city that is pregnant with great possibility as we step to the future. We ask that you bless this entire meeting. Let everything that is said, everything that is done, lead to not just principles but processes that lead us to a place where we have a better city, better educational system, better teams working together, and better opportunities for our students to do better and to excel, and then a better community who stands behind what is necessary for our children to grow and be fulfilled in all that they are deemed and called to be. Bless this meeting. Let every word be great, and let every aspect be understood, and let every promise be fulfilled. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Praise the Lord and good morning to everybody. Our God is good all the time.
All the time.
All the time, our God is good. I thank and praise him for this privilege to stand with faith leaders and friends from across this entire city to say that we are 110% behind Mayor Brandon Johnson and his vision for the Chicago Public Schools. It's clear that the mayor was elected by the people of Chicago to lead us. We cannot back down. We must trust him in the process. We elected him because we trusted his vision, and we must trust him to do the job that he was elected to do. We cannot function without a Board of Education, and we cannot lose time when our children's lives and educations are at stake. So I'm sure that the pastors and leaders that are here with me agree that we must move expeditiously in order to move the city forward. It's very clear to us from the beginning and up to now that Mayor Johnson has had our students at the forefront of his election. At the top of his agenda and on his heart. Being an educator himself, he's very sensitive to the things that must go on. We cannot allow foolery or procrastination to stop us from moving forward because there's so much at stake. It's very clear to me, I've been pastoring in this city 44 years, I've served under eight mayors, and I've never seen a mayor get so much opposition to make an appointment. And when Mayor Laurie asked for the resignation of a person in these positions, the person bowed out. And I think that it's important that all of us know, when we're not doing the job that is there, that we have to just move on and be the leader. If my whole Deaconess Board and administrative staff resigns tomorrow, I gotta have some people in place because Sunday's coming.
That's right.
And we have to make decisions. The hungry have to be fed. The youth have to be encouraged. I can't waste time having a whole lot of small meetings when so much is at stake. The leader has to speak to the situation. I was sharing something not long ago. We move in leadership to the point where we don't cry over what was lost, but we prophesy to what we have left. And we will not lose time crying over whatever happened before now, but we speak life to what is to come. My brothers and sisters, ladies and gentlemen, the Chief Executive Officer of the City of Chicago, Mayor Brandon Johnson.
Y'all do me a favor, y'all give it up for our host Bishop Trotter one more time. What he was really trying to communicate is that he's been pastoring about as long as I've been live. Board of Education and the transition plan that we have built together. I'm proud of all of the work that we have been able to do in partnership, including shifting away from the inequitable student-based budgeting, completing the change to a school safety model that doesn't rely upon school resource. Our collaborative work also improved special education services. I will just say, as I finish my comments, the most legitimate existence of anyone in this country is the legitimate existence of a black man. Now, I understand that there are individuals that wish to use this as a political opportunity to sow seeds of doubt, but make no mistake about it, I am going to stand firm and flatfoot to ensure that our students get what they deserve. Because just for the record, I was legitimate when I took an arrest against other administrations when they were closing down black schools. I was also legitimate when I went down to Springfield to fight for a fully-elected school board. You know, again here, I also just want to just acknowledge the fact that, that since I've been in this position, this position of authority. As you can tell, that they clearly expect a black man to do everything in less than two years. But I will say this, though. I do appreciate the energy. I do. Because I do know that if things were still, it would mean that we are moving in status quo. But the fact that things are moving and shifting, it means I'm doing exactly what I was elected to do. And we've done it in a very short period of time with the previous board, collaborating to improve special education services, increasing accountability for the renewal process for charter schools, establishing and embarking upon a five-year strategic plan that neighborhood schools will be prioritized, that sustainable community schools is the model in lieu of school closures. I have no doubt that the new board will continue and build on the progress using the five-year strategic plan as we guide and collaborate with stakeholders, community partners, to bring about the transformation that this city deserves. And I'm proud to announce that we have our first iteration of my recommendations to be on this board and be a part of this transformation. That's Olga Batista, Makyla Blaze, Mary Gardner, Reverend Mitchell Johnson, Debbie Pope, Frank Thomas. I'm confident that these new candidates will work to lead CPS into the world-class school system that our children deserve. This group is the first step of more nominations that will ensure a smooth transition into a hybrid board, of which I'm the only mayor in the history of Chicago that fought for an elected school board and kept his promise to ensure that a school board would happen. And I will continue to nominate Chicagoans who are dedicated to meeting the needs of our students, who are deeply rooted in their communities and represent the diverse constituencies who actually send their children to the Chicago Public Schools. Because, oh, by the way, I'm the first mayor in the history of Chicago to do just that as well, sending my children to the school district right here in Chicago. When I ran for mayor, I promised to transform our public education system. I'm a man of my word. And that means bold leadership in a moment that doesn't nibble around the edges and look for incremental gain. Our people in this city are tired of political leaders that want the status quo to nibble around the edges, and then when children don't get what they deserve, they blame the very communities that they've disinvested in, not on my watch. Status quo, the past mistakes that have left our students behind, we're not doing that. And then the so-called experts, the so-called fiscally responsible stewards are making the same argument when our people wanted to be liberated and emancipated in this country. The argument was, you can't free black people because it would be too expensive. They said that it would be fiscally irresponsible for this country to liberate black people. And now you have detractors making the same argument of the Confederacy when it comes to public education in this system. These are the people who package these gimmicks, lie to our people, stole money from our people, refused to pay into the pension system, left the taxpayers with the bill and for me to fix it. But we're gonna build a world-class school district, you are. Because the vision of the status quo is to leave our children behind. Fire teachers, fire teachers assistants, fire custodial workers, fire nurses. That is their vision. My vision is about building a system that works for everyone. Imagine our schools down a pathway of new discovery where you don't have to have senseless cuts and real disruption and chaos. You can actually have a school district that doesn't embrace mass layoffs, massive school closings, austerity. 1,100 black students are still missing from 2013. This district did not find those children when the schools were closed. That fiscally irresponsible decision have left decades and tiers of destruction, and that ends now. I am the only mayor who was taken an arrest, whose lobby legislators, who marched and organized for more investment for our children. The city leaders have long resisted investing in our children. I am no longer going to accept the status quo. We believe that we can have a world-class system that not only creates sustainable community schools, but a system that embraces the arts, that embraces the trades, that makes sure that our children can participate in sports. We have schools right now who do not have dollars for buses to take their kids to sporting events. We have a system right now that can't adequately bus children to the very spaces that they say they believe in. And so that ends. I was elected to fight, and fight I am. Thank you, Olga. My deputy mayor, Jen Johnson.
Good morning. I'm Deputy Mayor Jen Johnson. I am the Deputy Mayor of Education, Youth, and Human Services. Again, I would like to thank the current board members for their service this past year. We appreciate their time and effort in advancing the transformation of our Chicago Public School System. It is a hard thing to stand up against the old guard and the powers that wish to thwart progress and maintain the inequitable policies of the past. So we thank the outgoing board members for the many accomplishments and good changes that we have worked for for a long time. I want to thank President Xi for his unpaid service. But the work is not done, and that is why we are ensuring that we have a planful transformation. We knew that the outgoing board members did not intend to stay, and none of them are on the ballot for election to the new hybrid board. We appreciate being able to collaboratively plan for this shift. The impending expansion to a 21-member hybrid board in January requires a transition. Bringing on new board members now ensures that that process begins and that experience can be gained in these ensuing months. I want to remind everyone here today that the mayor has the full authority under state law to make appointments to the board now. He retains additional appointment authority until the board fully transitions to an all-elected board in 2027. As you already heard much more eloquently than me, Mayor Johnson fought for an elected school board because he believes in a board that is ultimately accountable to Chicago voters, just as he is accountable to Chicago voters who put him in this office to transform our educational system. He's going to do everything in his power to ensure that the individuals who serve on the board are champions of our public schools. The candidates for appointment that we are introducing today are deeply rooted in their community. They have experience that will serve our students immediately, and they are motivated to invest in our schools and ensure continued progress and improvement to student experiences and opportunities. Today, again, we are announcing the first round of board nominees who have begun the process of vetting to be appointed to the board. The mayor will submit, as is his duty, additional members for appointment, including individuals who will be appointed based on the outcome of the November 5th election, based on which sub-districts the winning candidates are from. We want to thank these individuals for being willing to take the baton and continue the work of successful board transition and continue a strong school year. Our school educators, students, and school leaders are in schools now, doing the work, doing the work with our children, and these board members are going to ensure that that continues. We are excited to work and collaborate with you. We know you will bring care, focus, and diligence to the board. There's been much hyperbole and use of the word chaos about this change in the board. We, again, have known for a long time that the board must transition, and this is the next step. Again, as the mayor already said, chaos is closing 50 schools at the same time. Chaos is labeling schools as failures and firing entire school staffs of mostly black women all at the same time. Chaos is mass layoffs to our schools, and chaos, over the years, has disproportionately affected black students, families, and communities in particular for decades. We cannot afford that kind of real chaos. Today, more than 320,000 students went to school and were supported by thousands of incredible educators, school leaders, and staff members. We have incredible students. Have you gone to our schools and talked to our students? They are amazing, and they deserve additional support to ensure that their needs are met. We will not go backwards, and we will not repeat the mistakes of the past. These appointees understand they have difficult tasks in front of them, but they will center the needs of students and schools, and we know they will serve with distinction. With that, I would like to bring up Olga Batista to provide brief remarks, followed by Reverend Johnson.
Good morning. My name is Olga Batista, and I am deeply honored to be stepping into this role as a new Board of Education Director member during such a critical time for our schools. My career is rooted in battles for equity and justice, and I'm prepared to bring that same passion and dedication to supporting Chicago Public Schools. My journey began as a state recruiter for the Illinois Migrant Education Program, a program of the Illinois Board of Education, where I worked very closely with agricultural migrant workers who passed through Illinois to do the critical work of detasseling corn, working on pumpkin, apple, and hog farms. These experiences gave me a firsthand look at the struggles faced by working families, and it has really reinforced my commitment to advocating for those who are too often overlooked. In my current role as the Executive Director of the Southeast Environmental Task Force, I have led on the front lines of the fight for environmental justice, particularly the General Iron case. It is not acceptable to concentrate polluters in black and brown neighborhoods, just as it's not justified to subject students and teachers to unsafe and underfunded schools. These are issues that I care very deeply about, and they are directly linked to why I am fully prepared to serve in this new capacity at CPS. Chicago is ranked the seventh-largest metropolitan economy globally, globally, yet we are failing decade after decade to provide adequate funding for our schools. I have seen the damage of this disinvestment firsthand. How can we ever justify over 1,000 classroom vacancies and massive cuts to essential programs and staff? It's just not right. It's not sustainable, and it has ripple effects through our communities, like mine here on the southeast side of Chicago. Our students deserve better. They deserve fully staffed classrooms, safe learning environments, and the resources that they need to thrive, including social workers, teacher aides, and speech therapists. Just as I have fought against environmental injustices in our communities, I see similar disparities in our schools. Unsafe, underfunded, and crumbling school buildings are no different than placing polluting industries in black and brown neighborhoods. They both perpetuate inequality, and they harm the same communities. We must act with the same urgency in addressing these educational inequities. You know, there's a lot of attention on this transition of this board right now, but I have to ask, where is the outrage about what's at stake if we don't fully fund our schools? We are putting our children's futures on the line, and we cannot afford to wait any longer. The true crisis is in the classrooms. It's not in this transition. This process may feel messy, but I have hope, and I know everyone here and more are committed to the moral obligation that we have to fully fund our neighborhood schools. Our children are counting on us to do better, and we cannot let them down. We must remain focused on the goal, ensuring that every child in Chicago has access to safe and well-funded education. I will work alongside my fellow board members, CPS, and the mayor's office to ensure that we address the root issues: underfunding, staff shortages, and unsafe conditions in our schools. We must hold ourselves accountable to the communities that we are serving. Just as I have fought for environmental justice, I will fight for educational justice. This is about creating a future where every child has access to a safe and quality education. Now it's time for bold leadership and decisive action. I am committed to working with the community, the educators, with the city leaders, and we're gonna make sure that we are not just rebuilding Chicago Public Schools, but we are making them stronger and more equitable for everyone. Now I'd like to introduce Reverend Johnson. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you, Olga, for that personal testimony and a reminder of what's at stake for our neighborhood schools. I'd like to thank Mary Johnson for his support, my fellow board nominees for their commitment to our city in a time such as this. What time is this? It's a time to underline the moral obligation. In my work, success looks like collaboration to find solutions to big problems. I, like my fellow board nominees, have a record of community change and stand steadfast in our commitment to Mary Johnson's vision, to fully fund neighborhood schools. He ran as a former school teacher. He ran as a parent, and he ran and promised to Chicago that he would change the narrative of Chicago Public Schools. And then you elected him. And when he said what he was gonna do and does what he said he would do, now all of a sudden, we have protests and pushbacks. This sounds like politics to me. A lot of this politics is rhetoric. It's misguided. We should be asking, are we prepared to break the covenant we made with the students at Chicago Public Schools? With parents who rely on a fully funded and functional school system? That was the promise. We're talking about fulfilling the messages we have to our kids with disabilities and IEPs, and hire teachers so students aren't teaching themselves in study halls. We've made gains in the Johnson administration, but we need to keep that momentum going. We need to honor our duty with dedication and action. We have not seen the plan or dedication from the corporate leaders at CPS, but this board intends to make sure our schools have the tools they need to graduate and educate prepared citizens of Chicago. I thank the outgoing board for their service and for their transition in order to move forward the key elements to fully fund our schools and our obligations. I thank all of you for your time today. Mary Johnson and the other speakers will take questions.
Okay, I do want to just thank again all of the faith leaders, community leaders that are here, and again, the outgoing board for their dedication, and I'm looking forward to working with members of the new board and the hybrid board moving forward. With that, we'll take questions.
Mayor, thank you so much. A couple of clarifications, I'm trying not to make this too long, but will they stay? Because you still will be appointing 11 members. It isn't a totally elected school board. So when you all say that there was going to be a transition anyway, there was always going to be those appointed, that meant the seven current, many thought, were staying. So it's not exactly accurate to say everybody was leaving until all this happened last week. To add to that, who vetted these candidates? Are they endorsed by the CTU? Were they asked ahead of time? Was this a deal breaker? Were they asked, would they fire CEO Martinez and agree to the $300 million?
Well, let's start with your first narration. The current members of the board that are now resigning had no intentions on staying. That's why they didn't run to seek office.
But you still appoint 11. It's not a totally elected board. So would they have stayed? I'm just trying to find out.
I know, and I'm answering it, okay? The seven members who are resigning... The seven members who are resigning never intended to stay. So I just want to make sure that's absolutely clear. They always knew what their assignment was. And just, again, since we are offering a clarification, last July, six board members resigned. Six of them. And I hope you can draw this very simple conclusion here. This is not the first time the number of resignations that we are seeing are taking place. Six members resigned. I replaced six back in July. And in this instance, seven members decided to resign, and I accepted their resignation. As far as members who will transition in during this period, there could be scenarios in which some members are able to remain. It really depends on the outcome of the election.
Would you talk further about those other questions that I asked? Are they endorsed by the CTU?
No, listen, I don't, none of these individuals up here...
But how were they vetted?
None of these individuals up here at this point are, I guess with the exception of one. One person is currently running. As far as who they've been endorsed by, you have to ask those individuals. As far as your other questions of what they were asked to do, they were asked to carry out the vision of public education, the one that I ran on, the one that's in my transition report, the one that's in this transition five-year plan, they were asked to carry that vision out. Thank you very much.
Okay, I thought I had a follow-up.
There were five questions there. Which one are you following up to? Question number one, two, three, four, five? If there's time, Mary Ann, we could talk later, but you're welcome.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. Just wanted to clarify, are these candidates endorsed by the CTU?
You have to ask those individuals. I'm not, I have not endorsed any of these individuals up here in terms of their sort of political aspirations. What's being carried out right now is my authority as mayor of the city of Chicago. If you want to know, this, I am fulfilling the executive responsibility that is given to me by the state law. If you want to find out who CTU is endorsing, go ask the CTU. I'm not the CTU. I'm the mayor of the greatest freaking city in the world, the city of Chicago. Do you have a follow-up?
Respectfully...
Do you have a follow-up?
I do have a follow-up. Thank you. We see that one of them appears to be employed by CTU. Are you able to confirm that? Debbie Pope?
She doesn't work for the CTU. Thank you very much. Next person.
Mayor, regardless of that, perhaps we can ask and poll the appointees up here if they have been endorsed by the CTU. That might clarify things right here for us all.
So Reverend Mitchell, I'm gonna help you. Reverend Mitchell Johnson is not running. Mary Gardner is not running. Ms. Blaze is not running. Is Olga running? Olga is not running. Who else did I miss? So no one's running. None of them. Come on, you all, just settle down. Craig has the mic. So no one on here, on the stage right now, none of them are running.
So Mayor, to the outside world, this kind of does look like, because the CTU was your biggest backer, to some, it may look like a coup by the CTU to get rid of the board members who would not do your bidding and fire Pedro Martinez. Can you respond to that?
What's the question?
The question is, this is, looks like a coup by the CTU to get rid of Pedro Martinez. Was there collaboration with the CTU on your part to make this happen so that you could fire Pedro Martinez?
So every single mayor in the history of Chicago has had the authority to appoint board members to multiple boards. Guess who still has that authority? This mayor does. Thank you.
Reminder that we're only doing one question, one follow-up.
I'm wondering if any of the board members can answer this question. Actually, if all of you can, just maybe even just a show of your hands. How many of you support taking out a short-term, high-interest loan to pay for a teacher's contract?
If you have a question for the mayor of Chicago, you can ask me a question. What you are not going to do is litigate what the board has the authority to do once they're appointed. You can ask that once they are appointed. No. Not going to do it. It's disrespectful. Do you have a question for me?
Okay, I'm sorry, you brought them up here, and it is a press availability.
Do you have a question for me? Ask me the question. Ask me if I support, I'm gonna help you out. Ask me the question, if I believe that we should invest in our children and make sure we don't lay off brown and black women? Yes. Yes. I'm not going to tolerate cuts. That's what the issue has been in this city. You know what a better question would be? What are you willing to do with your power to ensure that a school district that stuffed black children in Willis wagons? What you should be asking me is, what are you willing to do when you had a district that have laid off black women? You should be asking me, what am I prepared and willing to do to ensure that our children get the education that they deserve? Anything necessary.
I'm going to ask my own questions. Thank you. The next question, I know that you've mentioned several times that you support an elected school board, you fought very hard for it, went down to Springfield. Many are calling what this is right now hypocritical, that you could have just let the process play out and let the election happen in November and then allow the 21 members to take office in January.
I use my authority that the people of Chicago gave me, which is to hurry up and make sure that our children get what they deserve. So here's the problem with that. Some of the same individuals who claimed to support an elected representative school board only got the gospel once I became mayor of Chicago. These are the same individuals in Springfield that did not fight for adequate funding, that when massive school closings were taking place, none of them stood up in that moment to say, you know what, maybe the authority of the mayor is too much. Now you actually have a mayor who recognizes democracy, have given the people exactly what they asked for and what they voted for, and now all of a sudden, they want to rehash the policies of Bruce Rauner, who called for state control and takeover? So we're not going down that route. We're going to invest in our children. As a parent, as a public school teacher, I'm going to do right by the people of Chicago. The people of Chicago voted for a parent. They got one of their own.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
Mayor, you said repeatedly that you don't comment on personnel issues, but over the past month, we've seen a majority of city council, we're seeing state lawmakers, we saw Pedro Martinez weigh in publicly about this dispute. Could you explain once and for all why you still don't think it's appropriate to talk about why you're dissatisfied with Pedro Martinez's performance?
Here's what I'm always willing to talk about. Making sure that every single school has a social worker and a counselor and a nurse. Making sure that every single school has a librarian and a librarian. Making sure that our schools have real college-to-careers as well as opportunities for the trades, for arts. Imagine a school district that allows for the whole child to develop, where every aspect of their being gets to come to life. That's the picture that I'm painting in this moment, because as a public school teacher, when students show up in the building, they don't ask who the CEO of the Chicago Public Schools is. When children show up hungry and unhoused, they don't ask who the board members are. You know what they ask for? Will you make sure you build affordable homes in this city, which we're doing? Will you invest in restoring the inequitable, just system that allows for real creativity to be expressed? And so, as I've said before, you know, people who decide to make a person know about one individual and carry out private conversations publicly, just put it to it this way, I was raised better than that.
What specifically did he do or not do that, you know, runs up against that vision?
This transition that I am shepherding right now is about ensuring that every single child in this city gets exactly what they deserve. I need people to stay focused. Look, I get the politics here. Stay focused for a minute. Do you know what it's like as a parent? When your child can play an instrument like the violin, but can't go to a neighborhood school because that school doesn't offer orchestra? You know what that's like? I know what that's like. That's why my son, we have to travel to the south side, because he just happens to be good at string instruments, and he plays soccer, and he honors AP government. I don't know why anybody recommended him for AP government. I have some suspicion. But we don't have enough schools on the west side that offer a full range of curriculum. We don't. We don't have enough schools that create a pathway to the trades. Do you know, there is another public educator that I'm working with really closely, and that's Juan Solgado. Do you know we have a 48% increase since I've been in office of people enrolled in community colleges? And you know the number one group, subgroup of individuals who are enrolling in colleges, community colleges? Black men. It's the highest group, because I've given clear directives. Grab our brothers by the hand. Take them to where they need to go and support them along the way and until they reach their full potential. That's all this is about, ensuring that our children receive their full potential. Go ahead. Thank you.
Nice to meet you, Johnson.
Hi, what's your name?
Nell Salzman with the Tribune.
Hey, Nell.
Thank you so much for answering questions. So I'm wondering if city council should get to have a hearing before these appointees are installed.
The city council can have as many hearings as they want. There's only one person who has the authority by state law to make appointments, and that's the mayor of Chicago, and that's me.
Hi, Mayor Johnson. Elizabeth Campbell with Bloomberg News. So you say you're not going to tolerate cuts. So what are you going to ask the new board to do to ensure that you don't have to do cuts, given the half a billion dollar deficit next year and the following year? Are you going to ask them to take out that short-term loan? Are you going to ask them to address the CEO's employment? Can you just provide some perspective on not doing cuts?
Their job, the board's job, like, I mean, all board members, no matter what kind of board you sit on, is to evaluate the executive. That's their job, their duty. They will do that. As far as what we do to ensure that our children have social workers, nurses, counselors, sports, and extracurricular activities, we have to look at everything. But one thing that I can tell you for sure, though, we have partners in Springfield that believe that we need to invest in, more in our public schools throughout the state of Illinois. And you know how I know they believed it? Because they agreed to a law that I helped pass. Hold on, slow down, stay with me. I've been here long enough anyways, you might as well just wait a few more minutes. So this evidence-based funding model that allows for equity, the state's calculation is $3.6 billion, of which $1.1 billion is dedicated for the people of Chicago. So this board and the people of Chicago, my administration, will continue to advocate in Springfield for more resources. As far as what we are prepared and willing to do to ensure that every single child gets what they deserve, everything is on the table. And let me just say this last point, I got you. Back in the 2000s, there was a board chair, president, by the name of David Vitale. He took out what were essentially toxic swaps, these high-interest schemes of loans, of which cost the taxpayers millions of millions of dollars. Before that, there was another individual who was responsible for the finances. His name was Paul Valles, and he instructed the mayor to take dollars out of retirement security, primarily for women, to give to developers and corporations. So you had David Vitale, who took out interest swap rates that cost the taxpayers hundreds of millions of dollars. You had Paul Valles, who took dollars that were dedicated for our public school system, particularly our workers, took those dollars, gave it to developers, caused the taxpayers to have mounds and mounds of debt, and then the brother who was in high school when they did that is now responsible to fix it. All I'm simply trying to say to you and explain to the people of Chicago that the so-called experts ran this city and this school district in the ground. And so, hold on, hold on, hold on, because I know you respect me. I do, because you're listening to me. I appreciate that. I wish more people would actually do that. The financial schemes that the so-called experts engaged in caused the crisis that we're in right now. And so, simply put, what this board is prepared and willing to do is to do whatever is necessary to fix the structural damage that others created while also building a pathway forward so that our children can participate in the $20 billion of new construction that I brought to this city in the first 15 months in office.
Thank you, Mayor. So just one follow-up. Is the short-term, high-interest loan one of the things that is on the table? If you say everything is on the table, so what is on the table? What should be on the table?
So let me ask you this. What is your definition of everything? What is your definition of everything? What does everything mean?
Everything, yes.
All right. Next question. Think we answered that.
Hi, Mayor. Carrie Shepherd, Axios. Am I missing something? There's only six up there? Where's the seven?
Yeah, this is the first, this is the first batch. So there will be others, there will be others. Oh, there are plenty of people who want to be on the school board. We don't have an issue with that. Next question.
But they've been vetted, you have vet these six individuals ahead of the November, of the 11 you can select in November? That's, you said the first round. What does that mean?
Yeah, so, which means that I have the authority to vet as many people as I want until we get to either seven in this short run or 11 in the future.
Just following up on Elizabeth's question a little bit, so if the state does not give you the money, how are we paying for this?
First of all, they're not giving me the money.
Sure, CPS, CPS.
It just makes it very clear.
Yes. How's the city filling that hole?
So, look, there are a number of things that I've considered, whether it's TIF surplus, that's just one option. Many of you all know that I've been on the front line of ensuring that TIF dollars go to the taxing bodies. And so, we have, we have options on the table. That's just one of them. But as I said, everything is on the table. But let me just be very clear. The state of Minnesota figured it out. Their governor figured it out. Their general assembly figured it out, because everybody in America knows that ESSER is running out. Everyone. Do you all understand something? As much as I know I say Chicago is the greatest freaking city in the world, we're not the only city in the world. Every single school district in America is experiencing the same crisis, that with ESSER and federal dollars running out, you have two visions. You can go back to the old days where they were closing schools and privatizing public assets? One of the chief architects of that was Arnie Duncan. One of the chief architects of the school defore movement was Arnie Duncan. The civic committee never said a word when those schemes were happening, not one word. So what the state of Minnesota, the state of Michigan, the state of California, I have to believe that we, as a state, can come together to make sure that the district in the Southland, the western suburbs, and Cairo, and East St. Louis, Waukegan, and District 299 gets exactly what it deserves.
Hi, Mayor Johnson.
How many of y'all came today? What is this?
We're all here.
Thank you for being here.
I don't, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think any of us have been able to get ahold of and have a conversation with the outgoing school board members since the press release came out on Friday. In your conversations with them, were you able to get a sense of why not single one of them wants to continue serving the board beyond this fall?
We've done a lot of amazing things together. It was this board that took my direction when we put forth a resolution saying we have to invest in neighborhood schools. It was this board that took my direction when we said that policing in schools doesn't create the safest of environments. It was this board that said that we have to move away from the school-based or student-based budgeting to more of an equitable budgeting system. It was this board that took my direction when we said that our teachers deserve paternity leave. It was this board that took my direction when I said we have to begin to move a process to improve special education. 25, 30% of black children are testing for IEPs. So that was important to me. It was this board that did that. So we did a lot of great things together, and now it's time to transition. That's all it is. It's a transition. And here's a part that's neat about this transition. The people of Chicago gave me the authority to do it when they voted for me. And so if there are individuals... And so if there are individuals who are transitioning out that wish to share their personal experience, they can do that. But I'm very proud of their service and their work and what we've been able to do in a very short period of time. Thank you for that question.
Hi, Mayor Johnson. Nader Issa of The Sun-Times. You've said you're worried about cuts and that's the big reason that this all is happening right now. You don't want to see people laid off, furloughs, that sort of thing. Do you have any sense of the magnitude of cuts you would be expecting if there were to be a shortage of money in the spring?
I don't worry. I don't worry. God has not given me a spirit of fear. So I'm not worried at all. I just want to clarify that, okay? But you know who, the people who do worry in this city? It's the black children who have to beg for everything. It's the children who don't have somewhere to lay their head. Those are the people who worry. It's the teacher who did everything in their power to show up for this school district and then the school district turns on them and says, "You don't deserve the job." That's the worry for them. It's the child who just wants someone to see them because they're depressed and we don't have behavioral counselors in buildings. And all we give them are people with badges and guns. Do you understand how sick that is, you all? We're talking about children and families who've had to worry administration after administration if someone actually gave a damn. I give a damn. And so, whatever that number is, whatever that number is, I'm not going to tolerate it. Whether it's 1,000, 3,000, whatever it is, we've had enough of that. We've had enough of it. Do you have a follow-up, Nader?
Well, I do, but do you have a sense of the magnitude of cuts that would be expected?
Whatever it is, it's too much. Whatever it is.
And among the many who have expressed concerns about the board resignations are down in Springfield. The governor has commented on it, state reps, state senators. You've said that that criticism is unfair and that you have the ability to make appointments to the board. But are you worried that that criticism will deepen any distrust or any, any poor relationships with Springfield in your attempts to gain more funding?
So we've had administrations that shut down 50. They wanted 150, by the way. Stay with me. Could you just see me for a second? We've had administrations who have shut down scores of schools. Thousands of black educators have lost their jobs because of the failures of CEOs and boards. Deep, deep, deep scars. From 2013, 1,100 black students are missing. No one knows where they are. 236 of them were Westsiders like me. They had an opportunity to be concerned. They had one. And they didn't act. And you know how I know they didn't act? Because I was in front of those chambers taking arrests with parents and from the elevators of City Hall taking arrests. When Jeanette Taylor could not continue on the hunger strike, I joined it to keep a school open on the South Side of Chicago. Now, look, there's been talks about, you know, state takeover. Bruce Ronner tried that already. He did and we rejected it. Let me just ask this question out loud, not for you to answer. So you have a black man who's a parent, a teacher, and the mayor of Chicago with the authority that the state gave me, and now they have concerns that I'm expressing that authority? That's just more rhetorical. All right. Who has a question now?
Hi, Mayor. I'm next.
All right.
Can you just give us some insight, a little bit of a behind-the-curtain view of how the selection process happened? You're sitting in an interview with one of these potential board members. What kind of questions are you asking them? How did these six people actually get chosen?
All right. So I didn't interview any of them. I have a team that does that, just like they did the other six. I'm glad you want to know what happens behind the curtain because you do know this process has existed for 75 years, right? No, I'm just saying, but you do know. So you could actually go look it up. But I'll do you a favor. I'll save you that effort. I'll save it for you. My team took the transition report that my administration put together with, how many were people on our transition team? 400 and something? So 400 and something, something people who are part of my overall transition committee. There's a component of them that focused on education. There's an entire book that you can actually look up and see everything that's in there. And then the board that I appointed, like every other mayor has been able to do, but we're going to just open up the curtain for you. We asked them questions based upon what the people voted for that's in my transition report. And then they get to respond to whether or not they see that transition report aligning with their values. And then recommendations come from there. Does that help you a little bit?
So are you saying that there's nothing that's currently happening, whether it be teacher negotiations or this ongoing back-and-forth with Pedro Martinez that influenced the decisions? This is solely made based on a transition plan that was released before you became mayor of the city?
Yes. My vision. Do you believe me? Okay. All right.
Mayor, if I may, a point of clarification. There are six people up there. Who's the seventh person? Is someone going to stay on board?
There are a number of people who we are considering. There are multiple people who are being considered who want to serve in this capacity. Trust me, this is Chicago. You will have plenty of people who want, who want to be appointed by the mayor of Chicago. We won't have issues finding people. I assure you that.
And that person's not ready today?
There are a number of people who could be on this stage. The people who are on the stage today are the people who are on the stage today. But since your colleague asked about the curtain, I'll just open it wider. There are other people who will go through a vetting process, by the way, like every other mayor for the last 75 years has done.
Got it. And to my question, sir. You know, there are no doubt people looking at this as a power flex. You have the authority to do everything that you're doing. But it doesn't seem to solve the problem, right? This is a money issue. You need $175 million for the teacher pensions. You've got to fund the demands of the CTU and their contract, their salaries, the smaller class sizes. I mean, where's the power flex on Springfield, on Governor Pritzker? How do you get money to solve this problem? How does what you're doing, these actions replacing your board, solve the problem? Get the money that you need?
All right. So if I just could indulge me for a second. The power doesn't have to be flexed. The power is just is. Because I have it by state law. So this is not a flex. This is just power. Okay? It's, it's, it's like the power that a person has to go into a voting booth. They're not flexing power. They're voting and expressing their power. I'm expressing the democratic power that was duly given to me. Now, as far as how we get partners to see the vision, not just for Chicago, but for all of our school districts across the state, it's going to take all of us. See, this is the difference between me and other mayors. I don't have to do anything alone. I don't have to intimidate people, threaten people. I don't have to do that. The people of Chicago are tired of that. The people of Chicago actually voted for... You know what the greatest power in the world is? It's the power of love. The people of Chicago voted for a lover. And so, are there other people who love as much as I do? I hope so. We can all go down to Springfield and we just love each other together tomorrow.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning. And by the way, Craig, with that deep voice, the only thing you can do after what I just said is, "You'll never find."
Oh, if only I could hold a tune. And it is still morning, so we've got that. But not, not arguing the need for the kinds of investments you're talking about. But the question is, when does the bill come due for this borrowing in addition to the debt the system has? And when that time comes, how will it be paid so that people aren't looking back on this year?
No, that's a, it's a great question. Look, that's why we need smart people on the board and people who can actually help guide that. Look, I have a budget director in the office. I have a deputy mayor for infrastructure, a chief operations officer, a policy director. We have experts in their respective spaces, right, that can offer up recommendations. I have one of the most brilliant chief financial officers on my side on the fifth floor. So all of us are going to work together and, and, and figure that out. But what I do know is this. Here's what I do know. That we cannot kick the can down the road. Can't do that anymore. The taxpayers got the bill from those schemes from the 90s and 2000s. And the board, along with all of us, our city council members, who can organize with us to take their respective wards to Springfield. All of our faith leaders are clearly committed to doing that work. You know, so, you know, when I say everything is on the table, everything is on the table. And the fact of the matter is, you all, the state of Illinois has to do more. And they agree. When I started organizing, Craig, I believe the state of Illinois was ranked 49th out of 50 in terms of school funding, 49th out of 50. I think we're now 32nd, somewhere in there. And that's not enough to give people high fives. It's a good, it's a, it's a good decent start. But there's more work to be done.
Mayor, no one doubts under state law you have this authority. But when...
Are you sure about that? Okay, I'm just saying. I believe you understand that. But I would say just a friendly amendment. I don't believe that everybody believes that.
No, certainly, certainly that is, that is the current law, although it is changing and you helped fight to change that law.
Yes, that's right.
But when 41 of 50 alderpeople write a letter saying, "Hold on, take a pause. We're concerned with this," does it give you pause?
No. You know, I'm going to tell you why. It's because how much longer are we going to make parents in the city of Chicago wait? How much longer? So, so let me get you straight. So everybody agrees, and I think that this is what your colleague just said. Everybody agrees that there are real issues and problems of disinvestment, right? Do we all agree that schools are woefully underfunded? Can we all have some agreement around that? I think we do, right? The question is, how will other elected officials use their power, or if we use someone else's word, flex their power to make sure that parents do not have to wait any longer? And so that's why I'm glad there are elected officials up here with me. Aldman Will Hall, Cook County Commissioner Tara Stamps. You know, there are a number of folks who recognize that waiting in this moment is the status quo. And I am not the status quo.
Good morning, Mayor. To reference the letter that Parrish just mentioned, do you agree with the criticism in that letter that the city spent too much time lobbying this past year for $2 billion for a new Bears stadium instead of money for CPS?
See, that's, that's where the politics come in, right? That's just the politics. What are they even talking about? Come on. There's no question of the receipts that I have as it relates to public education. So y'all want to talk about what my priorities are? In receipts, who on that letter starved themselves to keep a school open? Who on that letter took arrests? In front of the City Hall, in front of the very elevators that are now held for me? Who else went to Springfield and took busloads of people to Springfield to advocate for the type of transformation that we are experiencing? So all I'm saying is, the moment people begin to take those unnecessary political shots at my administration, you have to question their motives. And just for the record, we do need a new Bears stadium. We do. But what we're here to talk about is to ensure that every single child can build that Bears stadium once we get the deal. Do we have any other questions?
I just have one follow-up. The announcement for the presser this morning mentioned that seven new appointments would be announced. So I, I think where some of the other questions have been coming from is...
It's okay. It's six right now. There's another batch that will come out. We will make recommendations as we move forward.
Was there someone over the weekend that like dropped out or like didn't pan out or, or anything like that? Was the intention for seven people to be here today?
The intentions was to make my vision for the Chicago public schools readily available to all the individuals who want to hear that.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Maureen Kelleher, Freelance with the Chicago Reader. Two questions. First one is real practical. Are the six people that we're seeing today going to be in the seats at the board meeting in October?
That's the intention, yes.
Okay. What's holding us back from the intention and the reality?
Nothing. Just the process, the curtain that's, that's now wide open. There's a vetting process and they'll go through the normal process that the other six that I pointed back last year, we did this already, they'll go through that same process.
Okay. One other question. This is bigger picture. So, you know, Governor Pritzker pushed hard for the graduated income tax. It didn't happen. That was supposed to be the money for schools. You pushed hard for Bring Chicago Home, which probably would have taken some pressure off TIF. TIF and the graduated income tax might have done the job on money we don't have either. Where are we getting the money?
Yeah, as I said before, that, you know, the TIFs are just one component of it. And to your point, that's... That's what the focus should be from these alders and these state reps and state senators. That should be the focus. So everybody agrees, and I thank you for the reporting that you all do at the Reader. Everybody agrees that we don't have enough. And so now, I'm on the front line saying out loud what everybody already knows and that we're actually moving towards that, that goal, which is to make sure that we have more than enough. And so everybody knows that there's not enough. Everybody agrees that what we could have done that could have created more than enough didn't happen. And now you have the mayor of Chicago, which by the way, every mayor that did not, did not support that graduated income tax. I'll say that one more time because you all reported this. This mayor did and does. And so now that we all know that we don't have enough, we know what it's going to take to get enough. And now that you have a mayor who is saying, "Let's go for more than enough," now all of a sudden people have concerns? Where is the logic in that? And so we know where we have to go and we know what we have to do. I am just bold enough and honest enough to say out loud what we have to do. And what we have to do is make sure that every single child, no matter what school, no matter what zip code, has social workers, counselors, nurses, mental health providers, sports, extracurricular activities. And that should be the case for every school district in Illinois. Have you seen what some of the districts are dealing with in the Southland? Their property taxes, in some cases, three, four times higher than those in Chicago? Look, y'all, if Chicago was the only area of concern, I will give you some of the pushback. But the fact that we have an entire state, an entire country, where the school districts across America are hanging in the balance and you have questions about my authority to do what the people of Chicago elected me to do? Those individuals should be ashamed of themselves. All right, who else?
Right here.
Hold on. From the, oh, yes, here.
Hi, Mayor Johnson. Sophia with AP. Just, just to clarify, these six people are your appointees. They will be on the newly appointed board.
That's why they're standing here.
Okay. And so they're no longer being vetted. I think a little confusing.
No, there's still, there's, there's, there's still an entire process. This is the same process that has always happened. They can't get vetted until I make a nomination or a recommendation. The CPS doesn't just walk around grabbing names and vetting people. You know what I'm saying?
Maybe just, just to clarify for the wider audience who doesn't know that process.
Yeah, look, I've said it multiple times. These are nominees. They will go through a vetting process like every other nominee has gone through for the last 75 years.
And then what, then you'll say they're good and they're on?
Well, the vetting process will confirm that they're already good. The vetting process will just make sure that there are, that whatever conflicts that could exist, that we are aware of those, right, or any other matter that needs to be aware of.
And it's your confirmation that, and then they're on the board?
I have the authority.
Okay. And the seventh position, you're still looking at candidates for that seventh position?
Well, we're actually looking for up to 11 because we're, we're, we're already transitioning. Well, we're actually looking for up to eleven, because we're already transitioning towards a fully hybrid. All right, thank you.
Mayor, you were able to replace the resigning board so quickly. Are you making plans to replace the CPS CEO as well? Do you have candidates in mind?
That's the board's responsibility. They will evaluate the CEO, and any other CEO that comes through. Okay, do we have a couple more questions back here?
Hello. How are you?
My God, I am doing terrific.
Well, good afternoon. Mayor, is this a good week to go to London for a Bears game, and also who's going to pay for that trip?
Okay. All right. I'm going to London to attract business to Chicago. Okay? I'm going to London to attract business in Chicago.
But are you going to the game?
Hold on a second, because you already know the answer to that. But I just want to make sure that you do the people of Chicago service, because I have to be very honest with you. It's pretty jacked up the way you frame that. That is. It is. It's disrespectful and condescending that the black man is going to London for a game. It's disrespectful. It is. And people get away with that too much. The governor went to Tokyo. The governor went to Tokyo to attract business. The mayor of Chicago is going to London to attract business, and while I'm there, I'm going to root for the Chicago Bears.
Can you confirm if you are not, or are you on leave from CTU?
Okay. All right. I'm the mayor of Chicago, you all. I'm the mayor of Chicago. Let me just, look, I'm trying my best to keep composure for these last fifteen months, but the fact that we are still trying to litigate stuff that I already beat... Let me just say this one more time. I already won. I am already the mayor of Chicago. Stop talking old news that nobody even cares about. Not one parent has ever asked me that question. Not one Chicagoan has ever asked me that question. Did you know what they have asked me? Will you make sure that the children who are unhoused in this city have an opportunity to lay down their head? That's what they're asking me. Will we have social workers and counselors, Mayor Johnson? My full-time and only job is to run this city, to love my black wife and my black children. Go ahead, Sarah.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
I have a couple of questions. They have to do with the pension payment, but also just with the general issue of entanglements between Chicago public schools and the city. And I'm wondering, first of all, if you've started some discussions about untangling the two? And the other thing I'm wondering is whether you are considering giving CPS more than the $160 million in TIF surplus that it's already counting on in order to help solve this year's budget issues?
Two very smart questions. So the entanglements are quite severe. The pensions is one of those dynamics. It is. And so there are some of those conversations that are happening right now, working with Senator Markwick, who helped create that process. There are so many entanglements right now, that's why this transition is so imperative. You know, as far as TIF surplus, as we continue to evaluate, as much as possible that's there, I'm going to strongly recommend that the board responds to that surplus. That's something that I've been fighting for as a parent, as a teacher, as an organizer. So what's been projected, in the event that it's more, I'm going to make sure that our kids, and that our board understands why our children should get that. Are there any other questions, or is that all? All right, thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Can we wait, 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 wait? Because you all are on our turf. This is church. And many of us pastors, we've been standing all day yesterday. We're going to ask Bishop Todd Whitley to come and give us our closing prayer, and we are done for the day, but understand this, the mayor just stated that he's not alone. We're here with him today. And the word of God tells us it's not by power, and it's not by might, but it's by His Spirit, saith the Lord. Come on, Bishop Whitley. You will too.
By your heads at this moment in time, our Father and our God, we thank you for the power of your presence here today. We thank you for bringing us together for such a time as this. We thank you, Lord, for your anointing that rests upon the leader of our city. It is not by power nor by might, but by your Spirit. You said, "We pray, God, you continue to empower him. Continue to speak to him, breathe on him. Continue, God, to strengthen and encourage his heart. Continue, God, to give him vision and creative ideas to make our city stronger and safer and better. We know, God, that in times like these, we need bold leaders. We're willing to make bold decisions on behalf of those who may not have a voice to speak for themselves. Father, be with him now. You promised to never leave us, and you never will leave him. We thank you, O God, for the children of our city that come to you. You said, 'Many are them that come, and forbid them not.'" So Father, we speak now for the future of our children. The future doctors and lawyers, teachers, thank you, Lord, for what you've already assigned to them in their future. Thank you, Lord, for this vision of this great mayor, that what he has already written and prayed about shall come to pass. Thank you for these faith leaders who have come to stand with him. Thank you for our city. Thank you for every family. Thank you for the stakeholders. God, we're in your hands, and we know what's to come is going to be better than what's been. We see ourselves in the future, and we look a whole lot better than we look right now. This is our prayer, in the name of Father who created us, in the name of the Son who redeemed us, in the name of the Holy Ghost who now feeds us. Let all of God's people lift your voice now and shout, "Amen." God bless you.